All right, so we are ready to start. Sorry about that. We're having some technical difficulties today, but you are listening to the City Council February 16, 2021, formal meeting, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Saleh?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right, well, welcome everyone. And our second agenda item, two A is COVID updates from Johnson County Public Health, Sam Jarvis, who is the Community Health Division Manager. Welcome, Sam.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us, and always appreciate the time to be able to share updates with everyone. In terms of our disease trends, certainly, as everyone can see on the state's dashboard, our COVID cases are trending lower, and we're very happy to see that. We're happy to see it leveling out to, you know, we're looking at an average of less than 25 cases per day. And so, you know, these are the levels that we saw, you know, early in the summer and at a certain point in time in the fall before we saw the two larger surges that we had were, you know, November, we had roughly 1,000 cases within a week, and that certainly caused a lot of alarm. We were able to really discuss and describe the charity community of all the different kind of measures that persons could take, and so we're happy to see this. We're certainly still encouraging everyone to continue to implement these mitigation measures. The pandemic is not over. These things will likely continue to be extremely important now and for several months until we know more with vaccine and certainly until we see more persons being vaccinated. So that communication will continue to come from us. But in terms of being able to keep up with contact tracing and everything else, we're well-suited. We've got a majority of our contact tracing positions filled, and we're, you know, continuing to keep them busy and up to speed with our skills and their capacity. So in terms of investigations, we feel comfortable where we're sitting. Again, with the changes at the state level with mitigation measures, the announcement of different variants and things, you know, there's still some unknowns out there. Some other items are yet to be determined, so we're carefully watching those and certainly wanting everyone to also continue to be vigilant. In terms of vaccination, on February 1, Johnson County, like other counties across the state, had entered into the next phase, Phase 1B. Where now, we knew roughly a week before, the state had moved from 75 and older to 65 and older, which essentially doubled the demand while keeping the supply roughly the same of what we thought we were or couldn't anticipate receiving for every week, which certainly does not cover everyone. And so we know that there's a lot of persons that are still very anxious and wanting to get vaccinated, and we're happy to hear that. And we hope that as time goes on, we can continue to provide more options for persons to get vaccinated. Currently, we are very grateful for the support from our hospital partners, UHC and Mercy, for assisting us with helping vaccinate those who are 65 and older. Certainly, both hospitals have stood up different ways where persons can express interest that are not their patients, and they are helping us vaccinate those who are age-eligible. In terms of the tiered occupations, we are still within Tier 1, and we are making good progress through those occupations, and we're utilizing our pharmacy partners as well as our hospital partners, who are able to do high-throughput to tackle those occupations. And so we are hopeful that by the end of the month, we'll be able to be able to forecast a bit more and start to look at what Tier 2 is, which is other providers and then certainly manufacturing industry. So we think that we're making pretty good progress, certainly slower than what we'd like and what other persons would like, but again, it's largely dependent on our supply. We're very fortunate to be in this committee where we've got a plethora amount of volunteers who have expressed interest. We've utilized several volunteers for other clinics or other operations for vaccination, and we also had other partners express interest in using their facilities. And so in terms of the logistics and things like that, we're very fortunate. It really is, again, looking at the amount of supply that we have. But those are probably the high-level updates and happy to entertain, or is there any questions?
Where do you stand with teachers and school staff?
Right now, we're looking at roughly across all school districts and schools around the somewhere between 40 to 60%, kind of depending on the school size. We've asked all of them to put their staff in waves, and so for the most part, we've addressed some of their most high-risk or high-exposure persons. We are hoping to be done with our educators by the end of the month, which is well on schedule. I think initially, we anticipated that we would not be done until mid-March or the end of March, so.
Great. Any other questions for Sam? Well, thank you. We are really excited to hear that potentially by the end of this month, you'll be vaccinating those educators that want to be vaccinated, so that's great. All right, thank you, Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Item 2B is the State of the City. I had pre-recorded this, so we will have our technical assistants play that now.
It is my duty, honor, and privilege to address the City Council and the community on the state of our city. Normally, I would be surrounded by my fellow council members, city staff, and members of the public. Tonight, although the council chambers are empty and we're meeting through a screen, I am feeling more connected than ever to all of you. I would like to start by thanking the members of our community. Your love for this city is amazing. You keep our democracy alive, and your stories inspire us in our work every day. Thank you to my dedicated City Council colleagues. I can't wait until we're back together in person. In a year that has been anything but ordinary, so too has your leadership been extraordinary. Your resolve, energy, and optimism has helped me be a better mayor and has strengthened our community. I look forward to all our work that still lies ahead to make our city more inclusive, sustainable, and just. I also thank you for putting your confidence in me and Mayor Pro Tem. I want to especially thank Mayor Pro Tem Saleh. Just over one year ago, we celebrated our election results on the first day of Black History Month. I am proud to stand beside you as leaders of this community and as a reminder of what is possible. I am thankful our paths crossed to bring us to this journey today. Finally, last but not least, thank you to the more than 600 outstanding city employees who always go above and beyond to keep this city running, our bus drivers, police officers, firefighters, waste collection crews, and everyone else. From cleaning streets to maintaining our parks, to keeping our residents informed during times of such uncertainty, you are all truly essential workers, and Iowa City is lucky to have you. When I delivered this address one year ago, I had no idea what my first year as mayor had in store. When we look back on 2020, we might recall the challenges of remote learning, the loneliness we felt at times, or the closure of a favorite business. But I hope we also remember the way our community came together. I want to remind us of this good tonight, but please know that the friends and family members who are not able to join us are certainly not forgotten. When we learned just how dangerous this virus was, I took a bold step to mandate mask-wearing and protect public health in our community. We worked to educate the community on safety measures and provide PPE to those in need. We launched several relief programs to keep our community afloat. Through partnerships with local service agencies, we offered nearly $2 million in rent, utility, and security deposit, assistance to low-income households, aid for small businesses, support for homeless prevention, mental health care, food security, and childcare services. And we joined in Project Better Together to provide additional assistance to BIPOC businesses and support for youth in their well-being and education through Neighborhood Nest. Although we couldn't gather in the ways we were used to, we successfully launched the first annual Climate Action Fest virtually, transitioned to a popular drive-through farmer's market, helped the members of the center stay connected through virtual programming, and even held a drive-in Halloween movie for families. Spending time outdoors was a welcome relief for many this year, so we increased our number of picnic tables and outdoor dining options, added extra snow clearing on more parks and trails, and partnered with Iman to bring free Wi-Fi to some of our parks. We're looking forward to expanding that Wi-Fi to more parks in the coming year. Just as we settled into finding a new normal, we were surprised by an inland hurricane, the DeRachio. Again, our staff gave their all with over 5,000 hours of staff time. Our streets team helped collect enough debris to fill Kinnick Stadium 31 feet deep. Park staff helped remove dangerous trees on our streets, parks, and trails, and refuse added extra collection routes, opened an additional debris drop-off location, and provided free yard waste bags to residents. And while we work closely with Mid-American Energy to get power reestablished in the community as quickly as possible, the library offered free charging stations, laptops, and internet access across the city via the Bookmobile. Employees from our fire department assisted in our neighboring Lynn County as they continue to strengthen their emergency preparedness. In 2020, the opening of a new train and tower site and the purchase of land for two future fire stations are two more ways our city is preparing to serve the health and safety needs of our growing community. In recent months, we have begun the long overdue and tough conversations on an issue that is extremely and personally important to me: eliminating racial injustice in our community. I know my fellow counselors join me from afar and taken this moment to honor the important lives of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and all the black lives lost too early to pervasive and systemic racism. Black Lives Matter, and your leaders will continue to work to honor that truth. We start by listening to the stories of individuals within our community. We held six Speak Up, Speak Out events and listening posts and had many one-on-one private conversations about injustice, our hopes, and our fears. To start, we have committed $1 million to social justice and racial equity initiatives, established a Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and adopted Juneteenth as an official city holiday. A few weeks ago, our city registered in support of a bill at the state level to decriminalize small amounts of marijuana, an offense which contributes to the racial disparity in our criminal justice system. We're restructuring the way we respond to calls for service. Recently, we approved a jointly funded street outreach position with the shelter house and a new law enforcement liaison position in partnership with community and Foundation 2 Crisis Services. These are the first steps in reducing our need to have armed officers respond to calls that are better suited for trained mental health professionals. To our residents who have been so committed to this fight, we hear you, and we are not done listening. The preliminary plan to restructure the police that was introduced by the city manager focuses extensively on a continuum of responses to crisis calls for service, a commitment to unbiased policing, and public safety for the 21st century. We are committed to continuing to get feedback on this plan, especially from those who traditionally have barriers, and refining the path forward. I was pleased to be joined by my fellow council members and unanimously approving the appointment of our new police chief, Dustin Liston. We know he was the right choice to help us achieve a more community-oriented public safety strategy. One of the upcoming projects he will focus on is our city's role in the new Guy Link Access Center. The city made its final payment of our $2.5 million commitment to this project, and we are all looking forward to having this resource within our community. For many years, city councilors in Iowa City have prioritized advancing social justice and racial equity. The reality is that there is still a lot of work to do, and there are still residents in our community who don't have equitable access and opportunity. But each year, we make incremental but meaningful progress. In 2020, the city's use of a racial equity toolkit to analyze the water utility shut-off policy led to an overhaul of the policy to help families at a time when they needed a hand, not another penalty fee. Equitable employment opportunity is important to us, which is why last year, we converted several hourly jobs to permanent positions with benefits. I am also proud that the city council's commitment to raise the minimum wage for hourly city employees to $15 will be accomplished in our upcoming budget. We continue to sponsor a social justice and racial equity grant program with $75,000 each year. This funded important projects in 2020, such as the creation of a multilingual newspaper to inform community members of vital COVID-19 health information. Expansion of translated documents have been a priority of the city in recent years. Language should never be a barrier to full participation in the community. I am pleased to report our partnership with Kirkwood Community College to offer free English language classes, of which have found success despite the challenges caused by the pandemic. These opportunities help create a community of inclusion. For the seventh year in a row, Iowa City has earned a perfect score for the LGBTQ+ inclusion on the National Municipal Equality Index. I am hopeful we can safely gather again later this year to celebrate both the 50th and the 51st anniversary of Iowa City Pride. Our Equity and Human Rights Department has been busy hosting trainings and programs for the community, including partnering with the Business Partnership to sponsor a Humanize My Hoodie workshop for local businesses and organizations. Our counselors and staff look forward to continuing to support these offerings and participate in the Juneteenth celebration, MLK Day celebration, and other important cultural celebrations. In addition to virtual events, I have made it a priority to keep our residents connected with all the awesome and amazing nonprofits and agencies in our city. Each month, I spotlight a different guest on our Community Connections Program, which is broadcast on City Channel 4, Facebook, and YouTube. As city councilors, we recognize just how vital these social service agencies are to our community. We've committed to investing in their success and have approved considerable increases to our annual Aid to Agencies Grant Program in recent years. Our upcoming budget includes another 3.5% increase for this program. We're also calling for another $1 million for affordable housing. I look forward to the outreach work of the new steering committee tasked with recommending an updated Affordable Housing Action Plan. In 2020, we made progress in increasing affordable units in the downtown with six units at the Augusta Place Apartments and the acquisition of five units for public housing at the Chauncey. We are also excited that as part of the South District Home Ownership Program, we now have two more affordable duplex units for sale for residents of the neighborhood and are working to put additional units for sale in 2021. Later this spring, City Council will consider adopting a form-based zoning code in the South District, providing property owners more revitalization opportunities in this historic and vibrant neighborhood. Elsewhere in and around the city, City Council has focused on creating sustainable solutions to development in our community. City staff are currently preparing a commercial tax abatement program to help incentivize development along the Highway 1/6 corridor. We also expect to add millions to our Affordable Housing Fund through fee and lieu payments negotiated in TIF development agreements. This includes $1.8 million from the downtown Tell-Wind project, which will bring a much-needed boost to an otherwise slow year for economic activity. The Tell-Wind project also designates several of these downtown buildings as local historic landmarks. This joins our earlier landmark designation of the Civil War-era property at 410 through 412 North Clinton Street. The Tell-Wind project will also pursue LEED Gold Certification as a result of our city's commitment to aggressive climate action. Last year, we adopted the Accelerating Iowa City's Climate Action Report and have made considerable progress. The design for the city's new public works facility was guided by our Climate Action Plan and received an award for excellence in energy efficiency design in October. The Climate Action and Outreach Office also launched new energy efficiency incentives for industrial properties in TIF districts and provided $50,000 in climate action grants for projects like local food production for immigrant, refugee, and low-income residents. We continue to make progress towards our goal of reducing carbon emissions by 45% by 2030. We've seen over 60 acres of new prairie planted, launched a tree planting voucher program, and welcomed our first class of community climate ambassadors. The way our city moves is also important in reaching our emission reduction goals. As of this summer, all city parking ramps are now equipped with electric vehicle charging stations. We received a $3 million grant from the USDOT to purchase our first electric buses later this year. This is the first of many exciting changes to our transit system. With the transit study complete, we hope to launch new routes this summer. City staff are coordinating with Corville to improve consistency to the fair structure and connectivity across the systems. Planning is also underway for pilot programs to offer late-night and Sunday bus service. For our two-wheeled commuters, we continue to make progress on our bike master plan. You might see the first green bike boxes now marked in several intersections throughout the city. These are a part of a continued effort to improve the safety of our streets for cyclists, vehicles, and pedestrians alike. Several new bike lanes and bike boulevards were completed in 2020, and projects this coming year will include a side path along Highway 6 and bike lanes on Benton Street and Gilbert Street. This summer, we will apply for gold bicycle-friendly status, which would make Iowa City the first to achieve this designation in the state of Iowa. The pandemic has encouraged people to spend more time outside and join Iowa City's beautiful and well-maintained park and trail system. We're committed to improving our parks and natural areas each year, adding amenities and making accessibility upgrades. Last year, we made progress on parks and playground improvements at Wetherby, Napoleon, Scott, Fair Meadows, and Lower City Park. Staff will tackle Court Hill, Glendale, and Chattock Green Parks in the coming year. I am excited to receive a recommendation soon for renaming Creekside Park in honor of a personal inspiration of mine and the first African-American writer to win the Pulitzer Prize for Fiction, the late James Allen McPherson. City staff is also kicking off a recreation master plan process to explore how our recreational facilities, programming, athletic fields, and aquatic centers can better serve our community. Although the members of the center haven't been able to gather in person, I am excited that they can look forward to many improvements that will provide a more accessible and welcoming space for everyone. Finally, I am proud to be a part of a city council who continues to prioritize support for arts and culture in our community. With the city's assistance, Public Space One took ownership of their home on the north side in 2020. The recent development agreement for the Tell-Wind project creates a new permanent home for the Riverside Theater. Our city contributed $1 million to the local Strengthen, Grow, and Evolve Arts Campaign, supporting the historic renovation of the Engler Theater. It was a moment to celebrate when the rehabilitated iconic Engler marquee was unveiled and lit up once again. I am optimistic we will find more of these pockets of light in the coming year. But this is not a blind optimism. I know we have many challenges ahead, and our path forward may at times be lined with sacrifice and struggle. The words of our Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. tells us, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl, but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." There may be times we have to walk or even crawl in the months ahead, but I know our city is in a strong position to push forward towards an equitable recovery. I am honored to be your mayor. I look forward to working alongside Johnson County Public Health, the university, our neighboring cities, my fellow counselors, city staff, boards, and commissions, and all of our awesome and amazing organizations and members of this community, all of us working together, doing whatever we can to keep moving forward.
Thank you all again for allowing me to be your mayor, and we have a lot to be proud of here in our city, the greatest city in the world, Iowa City. We are moving on to item number three, proclamations, and this is Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Day. Whereas the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club was chartered on February 22, 1921, just six years after founding of the first Kiwanis Club in Detroit, Michigan, and three years before the founding of Kiwanis International. And whereas the mission of the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club is improving the world one child and one community at a time, and whereas the objects of the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club are to give primacy to the human and spiritual rather than to the maternal, the material values of life, to encourage the daily living of the golden rule in all human relationships, to promote the adoption and the applications of higher social, business, and professional standards, to develop by precept and example, provide through this club a practical means to form enduring friendship, to render altruistic service, and to build a better community, to cooperate in creating and maintaining that sound public opinion and high idealism, which make possible the increase of righteousness, justice, patriotism, and goodwill. And whereas the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club provides financial assistance and support to the Ark of Southeast Iowa, Any Given Child, Dream City, Immunity Crisis Center and Food Bank, Domestic Violence Intervention Project, Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County, Salvation Army Shelter House, and whereas in a joint project known as Camp Olympia at Kiwanis with Iowa City Old Capital Kiwanis and the Nebraska Iowa Kiwanis District, the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club provides funding, transportation, and other assistance, enabling four underprivileged Iowa City youth in fifth and sixth grade to attend a five-day summer camp in Boone, Iowa. And whereas since 1947, the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club has annually provided the John E. Briggs Scholarship to a senior in the Iowa City Community School District or Regina Catholic.
or Regina Catholic Educational Center, who will be attending a college or university in Iowa. And whereas the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club is a part of Kiwanis International, a group of over 550,000 members in over 80 countries and geographic areas worldwide. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim February 22, 2021 as Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Day for 100 years of dedicated service and commitment to the Iowa City community. There is no one here to accept this proclamation, but we do thank the Iowa City Noon Kiwanis Club for all that they do within our community. We are moving on to items number four through eight, which is our Consent Agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So move to Fergus.
Second, Taylor.
Would anyone from the public like to discuss any items here? If so, please raise your hand and I will call upon you. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Uh, Sali?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for community members to address any topic that is not an agenda item. So if you would like to address council, please raise your hand at this time. We also ask that people keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome Karen Cubby, followed by Amelia.
Good evening. My name is Karen Cubby. I live in the Mark Twain neighborhood. And I have two quick items. One is I just wanted to congratulate Eleanor Dicks on her impending retirement and thank her for the thousands of issues she has plowed through and helped the city navigate. And I hope that she had, that you have Eleanor some time of do-nothing-ness before you begin whatever is next for you. So thank you very much for your years of service. And secondly, I wanted to, uh, I am here as a member of the Iowa City Downtown District Legislative Committee as we've been looking at the CIP, the Capital Improvements Projects. And since 2013, we have been advocating and on the issue of market and Jefferson Streets being turned into two-way streets and realize that this was not included in the city manager's proposal for the CIP during your budget deliberations and would love to request that you all have some discussions about reinserting that project. We know that the city has worked very hard over the last years to reduce the number of one-ways that we have, knowing that the Dodge Governor couplet is difficult to navigate because it doubles as a state highway. But this is a couplet that we can do something about. And it's great for neighborhoods that those two streets go through. And it's really would be wonderful to have two-way traffic for the North Side neighborhood. And I'm not really sure what the price increases that were cited is one of the reasons why the project was taken off that list. And I know it might be about some of the pedestrian bumpouts, but I really hope and the Downtown District thinks this is a high priority that this project get reinserted back into the CIP. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Karen. Welcome, Amelia, followed by Nicholas.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, hello, council. I would just, I'm not very prepared today. I didn't think I would be speaking. But um, I would just kind of like to reiterate everything me and IFR have been saying for past few months here. I am completely not in favor of going forward with the suggested police budget, Fruance's police budget at all. There are multiple problems with it, which we've discussed over and over and over again. So I don't really feel the need to go in and repeat those things. But there are a few things with the OIR report that we have also discussed that I would like to bring up again. Just how, one, the report centers ICPD and their worldview and not the victims of the violence that they perpetrated. Even when the report authors seek to criticize the perspective ICPD presented to them, the mere fact that they are so overrepresented means that they are, and by implication, the city value law enforcement far more than those, the cops harmed by their actions. That's one thing that none of us really understood about the OIR report and why. Another thing is that the nights following June 3rd show quite clearly that ICPD's entire justification for their actions to prevent a dangerous situation by leading protesters to the highway was completely false. In fact, the same night, Iowa State Patrol had already redirected traffic. So there would have been no harm in simply letting the march pass by. This is something that we brought up last meeting. Another thing to add to that is like we got on the highway or the interstate literally the day after. So it was just so un, completely unnecessary use of violence that they perpetrated because they simply wanted to. I think it really fed their egos a lot, fed the police's egos. And I think honestly, they probably thought it was funny, which we all know, people who were there at least know because we could hear them laughing and snickering and making crude comments about it and those type of things, things like let them, let them get the gas or something like that. So that, also, the city clearly has no interest in limiting the power of the police. In fact, as Fruance's plan shows, the city's sole interest lies in expanding the power of the police, increasing its footprint in the community, making events like those on June 3rd only more likely to perhaps even, and perhaps even more violent. When we let this stuff happen with no consequences, when we let the police tear gas our community members, kids and old elder adults, that's just going to fuel them more and more, knowing as much as they already did know that nothing is going to happen to them. They're not going to face any consequences. So making events like June 3rd only more likely and perhaps even more violent. After over a year, the city has yet to say anything about the brutal mistreatment of Chris Kelly, a black man in this community at the hands of ICPD, yet soldiers on ahead, making them even more powerful and less accountable. So yeah, those are just some things IFR and me and among other people have repeated themselves over and over again. So it's, it's really getting old now. But we would really like to move forward in this. Another thing that I would really like to point out is I work in a hotel downtown. More than I can count, I've had houseless people in our community, our neighbors, come in, say that, I try as best I can to get them help and everything, but they say that they got denied at the shelter house or they can't find it or they don't know where they're at. People come at the Greyhound bus station a lot. This is just something I think that Iowa City really, really needs to dig deeper in. Among everything else, like Iowa City just needs to dig deeper in all the issues we're trying to solve here. But this particularly really, really, we really need to dig deeper in, especially among the horrendous cold weather that we're facing and seeing people all over the community, all over the country, all over the world, probably even freezing to death, which is completely, completely ridiculous. Like I don't even know how, I don't even know how that happens. There should be always, um, there needs to be a system where houseless people are able to get hotel rooms, a phone number to call, something of that. Another thing is rides to the shelter house. People oftentimes don't know where it's located, don't know how to get there, don't have a map, don't have a cell phone that they can look stuff, information up about it. Like it just needs to be way more accessible. And we really need to do better at community outreach to these houseless people. There's no reason why we can't go up to them on the street and offer them support or have somebody, a mental health representative kind of going around checking on people, making sure people are okay.
Thank you, Amelia.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you. Nicholas, welcome.
Oh, well. Ooh, my feet are cold.
Emmy, Emmy, you might want to mute yourself. Um, good evening, council. I'm glad to be speaking to you all tonight because I always love it when you misrepresent something that I've said. And it's fascinating to me because it always astounds me when you try to get away with it because you know I'm listening and you know I'm going to say something about it if you try to do it. So when Counselor Taylor tried to suggest that what critics of the OIR report had said, she said something to the effect that, you know, the OIR authors hadn't consulted anyone on the protest side of the equation. That is not actually what anyone said. And in fact, I remember very clearly, and you know, the thing is, there's video of it, so I have the receipts. What I said was that no one contacted the protest organizers. And I know this because I personally contacted the people from IFR to ask them if anyone from OIR had contacted them about giving their feedback for this report. And to a person, they said no. Not a single person contacted them. And in fact, the only reason why the two people that they did talk to, who by the way, because I read the report, I know were complainants before the CPRB, was because the city manager, Jeff Fruance, specifically directed them to talk to them. And those were the only people he directed them to talk to. He could have easily suggested to talk to Rineem or to David or to any of the people that you all personally know. And in fact, if the city had actually been serious about getting feedback for this report, you all could have blasted it out on social media. You, I mean, you have a communications department. If you wanted that information to get out there, it easily could have. The fact that it didn't is squarely on your shoulders. And so the thing is, in addition to that, even though those two people were finally contacted, the other point that we made, which you also grossly misrepresented, was that nothing in the report actually reflects that communication. They directly quote ICPD officers no less than seven times, seven different individuals in law enforcement. Not a single item in the report is attributed to those two people that they supposedly talked to. They mentioned that they talked to them, but no claims are made about what they actually said. And it seems pretty clear that this was done specifically at the behest of the city manager. The other thing that I want to note is that you all keep going on about how like, oh, well, we have to do incremental change. We have to make slow, steady progress. Right now, the University of Iowa is considering a plan to drastically defund and reorient its own public safety department. One of the three plans they have before them is precisely the sort of thing that IFR had asked you all to do. And you all keep saying like, oh, well, it's too radical. It's impossible. When you literally have somebody right on your doorstep who is doing the thing that you all think that you can't do. And the reason why is because you're just cowards, every single one of you. I'm not going to accept any of you because even those of you who actually disagree with what ICPD has been doing, you all like cower. You hide behind your positions. So honestly, Counselor Sali, if you want to speak out, speak out. Because if you don't, then you're just as useless as everyone else. I'm extremely mad about this because when you lie about me, like, it's so infuriating. I know all of this better than every single one of you. And the reason why is because I actually read these things. You all keep going on about how you're not specialists in these matters. All you would literally have to do is actually read these reports and perform like an ordinary analysis of it. The fact that you can't do that just shows how completely incompetent you are and how you don't care about any of these things. Thank you.
Welcome Eric, followed by Roy Sam Porter.
Okay, there you go. So, um, I'm going to speak on this stuff because I do not agree with what the last two speakers even said. I felt a bit of anger when I listened to the last two speakers, but I let them speak and I didn't say anything. I am a member of the TRC. If you want to address things like that, we have a meeting on Thursday. Come sign up for that meeting. Come show your voice. Come say what you want to say about those things. But to be calling out like mayors and like council members, that's, this is totally unacceptable. This is unacceptable. Many of the measures that, um, the IFR have brought through has, you know, we agree with those things. But some of the extreme things, and one of the words that one of the last speakers used was the radical things. Hey, I was just downtown today and Americans say I was downtown today and I still saw spray paint on the walls. That's not something that's going to solve anything. If you, we need to have a dialogue, not jumping into a meeting and, and, and this, and calling out council members by name. That's not going to solve anything. And we can talk about things. I'm not shutting it down and saying, hey, I don't want to talk. I don't want to hear anything anybody else has to say. But we keep going back to June 3rd and we go back to that over and over again. And it is something that we, we need to talk about, definitely. But we can't just keep going back to things that are not going to happen. There are people, there are people who feel like they are disenfranchised. There are people who feel that they've been, you know, socially and racially injustice. But we have to discuss those things, radical changes and saying things that you know is not going to happen tomorrow is not going to help it. And this is my piece and I yield with that.
Thank you, Eric. Welcome Roy Sam Porter, Supervisor Roy Sam Porter.
Hello, everybody. Mayor Bruce Teague, I would just like to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to the Iowa City Council. Thank you to Mayor Bruce Teague. Thank you to Mayor Protem, Azahir Sayla. I just got a few things to say. As I'm saying thank you, I'm saying thank you and it's coming from the bottom of my heart because of where I see Iowa City. I am so, I'm at a place right now, I'm so happy with Iowa City. I don't know what to do. I am very proud of Iowa City Council. The council have come forward. They have done so many things to help the people in our community. Be it that some people don't feel like you've done enough, I'm appreciative for everything that each and every one of you have done. We have an African-American mayor and we have an African-American mayor protem, who I am so very proud of, who have worked so hard throughout this past year with everything that has gone on from the start of this pandemic to, uh, Black Lives Matter and George Floyd happening, to Juneteenth, to the DeRachio, to just everything that has happened in Iowa City. Everything that has happened, it has not been easy. And for anybody to come on here and try to put these people down and call them cowards, no, you're a coward. You are the cowards because you can't even face the people to stand up for what they have stood up for for us. They have been there for us. They have done so much. He has read a whole, um, thing of everything. You just saw a presentation of everything that Iowa City is doing. And then you just want to keep, like Eric said, you just want to keep going back to the June 3rd. June 3rd is just one day, June 3rd, 2020. We have issues that has happened. Lots of things has happened in Iowa City besides June 3rd. And they put an ad hoc committee together called the Truth and Reconciliation. And instead of bringing this to them every time they have a council meeting, bring it to us. This is what this was put, put forth for. If you got a complaint, bring it to us. Let's sit down. Let's talk. Let's have a conversation. Nicholas, you sat in on our conversation, our meetings, uh, two weeks ago. And we asked you if you had something to say. And you, when you said and called the councilors cowards, I think you're the coward. I think, you know, I'm sick and tired of the people that's hiding behind. I think, you know, I'm sick and tired of the people that's hiding behind their computers and hiding and jumping on Twitter. We know you have a Twitter feed. We know you go on there, you put things on there. That's not true. And you want to sit and say that they're lying on you. You're doing some things yourself. That's not true. So when I'm gonna end my, um, what I have to say, but before I end, I'm going to say what I gotta say. Because I'm tired of coming on here and listening to people talk about I F R. I'm tired of white people disrespecting our mayor and Mayor Pro Tim by saying they don't understand what's going on, when in reality they are black. I feel like you're using your white privilege and I think it's time for you to stop it. Enough is enough. I am so proud of Mayor Bruce T., Mayor Pro Tim Mazaher Salah, who has went above and beyond to help the people in our community who cannot afford rents, who are on the verge of being thrown out. She has went above and beyond to help these people to not get put out. Uh, they, the city council themselves, along with Mayor Bruce and Mayor Pro Tim Mazaher, Pauline, Janice, Laura, John, and everybody on here has went above and beyond to even make it so that the water don't get shut off during this pandemic. It has not been easy for nobody. They have made a way out of nowhere, just trying to, um, when there are issues, they're seeing the need and they're trying to fulfill them. So I'm just so proud of what I'm seeing in Iowa City. I would love to continue to work with you guys. Um, I, I, um, I'm sorry, Susan, I didn't mean to leave you out as well. You even come on board and you have put yourself out there and you're saying, hey, we need this. This is the help. This is what is it that we can do to help our people in need? And this is the need that I've seen all of city council do. I am so very proud of Iowa City City Council. And I F R, if you've got some issues and you want to talk about it, bring them to the Truth and Reconciliation. With the truth telling, let's talk. There is a place, a space for you all to come. Instead of coming to city council calling them cowards, there is a place for you to come before us. I am the chair and I would love to have these conversations with y'all and stop the name-calling of our city council, of our elected officials. They were elected for a reason. And it, they have given us the power, the T R C, they have given us the power to be able to talk about this, but you guys got to come to us. Instead of coming, interrupting their meeting, every meeting you want to come on and talk about June 3rd. Come to T R C and let's talk. And, uh, last but not least, I don't want to leave out Jeff Fruin. Jeff, I do want to tell you, thank you, uh, working with the Black Voices Project. Yes, we know that there are some issues in the police system, but we want to work it out. There are going to be some trainings that we plan on working with Jeff and the new police chief. It's all about building relationships. It's not about trying to put people down. We haven't even met this police chief. We don't know what he's going to bring, but he said he's here to help. So we have to give the people the opportunity to help.
Thank you, Supervisor Porter.
Thank you.
Welcome, Sarah.
Hi, Council, Sarah Barron from the Affordable Housing Coalition. Um, really quickly, I did send an email about this, but I want to make it public for everyone who's listening in. The state of Iowa is going to be receiving and distributing $195 million in rent and utility assistance that can be used for back utility bills as well as back and future rent payments. To put that into perspective, um, when there was money available in 2020 for some rent and utility and mortgage assistance, there was about $30 million. And Johnson County received about 3.7 million of those dollars. So if we look at $195 million with those same percentages, Johnson County will be on track to receive about 20 to 25 million dollars in assistance through this, um, state-administered program. So what I want to say to you first is, thank you for being willing to listen to the community, to leave people's water on through the pandemic, to wait and give people a chance to get back on their feet. Um, we now have an opportunity to apply for this state money and get those bills paid. So you made the right decision, and I'm so glad that you did, to leave people's water on and not send them to collections. Um, because now we do have this federal money that we can use, um, to pay those back bills. Um, also, it is imperative that every single member of the Johnson County community who is eligible for these programs is able to apply. And that's why the Affordable Housing Coalition is going to be working with partners from United Way, the Center for Worker Justice, Johnson County Community Shelter House and others to offer a wide-scale, comprehensive assistance program so that households can apply for these funds and receive them. We want to make sure that every household who needs this help is able to get it. We want to demonstrate the level of need and most importantly, we want for households to be safe and be able to economically recover from the, the crisis that has been exacerbated by COVID. So we'll be coming back to you, um, for your input and suggestions and assistance and making sure that we do reach every eligible household, uh, with this program. Um, and thank you again for having the foresight to provide this grace for households while they get back on their feet.
Thank you. We have just a few more minutes if anyone else would like to address. Seeing no one, we're moving on to item number 10, planning and zoning matters. Today, rezoning 2525 Highlander Place. Ordinance, rezoning property located at 2525 Highlander Place to a highway commercial to C H dash one with a historic district overlay. And I'm going to open the public hearing. And welcome staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Danielle Sisman, Neighborhood and Development Services. This is a rezoning to a historic district overlay for the Highlander Supper Club and Convention Center. Sorry, I get my slides moving here. Located, uh, north of I eighty along North Dodge Street, uh, highlighted here in the white outline. Um, the owners have requested this voluntary landmark rezoning, um, partly to make, um, to allow access to additional tax credits once it's, uh, landmarked. The Highlander Supper Club was built in 1967, so it's more of a suburban landmark, uh, than we've seen probably before in historic landmarking processes. It was added on to in the early 1970s and incorporates modern construction materials and, uh, typical 1960s architecture. Um, the design of the entry includes some columns and a canopy, all features embodied, like I said, in that 1960s design aesthetic. The Supper Club and Convention Center are also examples of, uh, 1960s design tied to consumerism and middle-class culture of recreation and vehicular traffic, travel, so suburbia as we know it. Um, here's an image of it today. The H B C met on January 14th and conducted the public hearing at which they reviewed and evaluated the historic significance of the property. And the commission did determine that the property meets the requirements for a landmark and voted to recommend approval of the designation. I would encourage anyone who has not read the, um, site inventory, uh, was in your packet tonight, to go back and look at that. Has some very interesting information about the project or the property over the years. Um, because a landmark rezoning designation is done as a zoning action. It does go to our Planning and Zoning Commission for their determination of appropriateness. They review the comprehensive plan and the goals contained in there. Um, it does, they did determine that it meets the comprehensive plan specifically for identifying historic resources. But also in this particular area of town, there's goals related to economic development. Um, so the ability to access tax credits would, uh, also coincide with that goal. Um, as I said, this is a, uh, rezoning action comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation. Um, staff, um, did recommend for this, the Planning and Zoning Commission did as well, based on, as I said, the Historic Preservation Commission's review of the significance of the property. So it is coming before you tonight with a recommendation of approval. I'm happy to answer questions.
Here are no questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this? Please raise your hand and I will call upon you. Welcome, Kevin. And followed by Angela.
Yes, K- Kevin Boyd, uh, the Chair of Historic Preservation Commission. Um, during my first historic preservation meeting, I was, I was kind of nervous. Uh, after we voted to adjourn, I breathed a sigh of relief. Um, I hadn't made a motion when I shouldn't have and I didn't really screw anything up. And then former Commissioner Frank Wagner from kind of halfway across the room asked if he could talk to me and that anxiety came rushing back. What was he going to say? Maybe I had screwed up and didn't realize it. But I was relieved again when he said, you're Bob and Leona's grandson, right? Bill and Sheila's oldest. My first job was at the Highlander. How's your grandma doing? These types of conversations have been common to me for as long as I can remember. Um, if you've read the, um, uh, site inventory form, you'll, you'll know Bob McGurk, uh, was my grandfather. Leona McGurk was my grandmother. Um, they were among the original owners. Uh, my parents and aunt and uncle managed the Highlander with my grandmother after my grandfather died in 1984. To be clear, I've got no financial ties to this property, nor does anyone in my family anymore. Um, but stories similar to Frank's, uh, have been repeated to me for years. Kevin McGurk Boyd, the Highlander folks, and then the stories would come. I waited tables there in college. We had such a fun crew. My parents got married there. My spouse and I had our first date there and then we got engaged there. I met Hayden Fry in the Supper Club. When my parents would come to visit me in college, they would always take me to dinner there, but I could just bring one friend. Uh, I was the front desk clerk and got to check in this so-and-so famous person. Oh, those cinnamon rolls, that epicurean salad. I heard stories like these for years and they let me know just how much this place means to the people in our community. Just this winter, I got a text from an acquaintance who was excited to take his kids swimming there, um, over the winter, just like he had as a kid. For my entire life, people would discover my familial relationship and tell me what the Highlander meant to them. For me personally, it's where I learned what it, what it meant to own a business. Uh, I remember asking my grandma when I was very young if she got to park, uh, parking spot right up front. She owned the place after all. She told me in a way that a grandma can do, um, no, I park in the back so our customers can have the best spots. It meant that home football weekends were work weekends for my parents, starting with those early Friday morning I Club breakfasts. It meant that during the Amanda V I P week, uh, that my folks would leave before, weren't leave for work before I was up and not come home until after I was asleep. But we always got some goodies, uh, at the end of that week. My gym bag was an Amanda V I P gym bag well into my 30s. As dignitaries came through, I anxiously await my parents arriving home, worn out, but happy to tell us what it was like to meet President Ford. It also afforded me privileges, a special lunch with my grandma and the otherwise empty Royal Scott. Pete-to-making in the kitchen for my Cub Scouts, birthday parties even in December, poolside. The pool bar even had a grilled cheese named after me when I was a kid, Kevin Special, I think. My mom mentioned that she'd been working with Jim in this story and on this nomination form, so I wasn't exactly, um, I wasn't entirely surprised when, when the application came to our committee, our commission. Um, you know, I believe that it, it meets the minimum qualifications, uh, to be a local landmark, but also preserves a place that feels like part of our community's history, a history that's a little closer to home for me, but also preserves that sense of place and history for people like Frank and those other first jobs, those special dates, weddings, uh, post-football meals and poolside parties. I see that entrepreneurial spirit in Angela and her family that, uh, I learned from my grandparents and my parents. I'm excited to see preservation used as a tool to support economic development. I've got a paperweight sitting next to me tonight. It's a glass dome with a bunch of pennies from 1973, the year the hotel and the conference rooms were complete. I don't remember much about my grandfather's office when he was alive. It was the office with the signatures. But I do remember the, the paperweight with the penny sitting on his desk. I remember that same paperweight later in my grandma's office at the top of the steep stairs, which I think is now a very cool bridal suite. And tonight it sits next to me as I encourage you all to support the local landmark status for this building, the history it represents and the owner's desire to use preservation as part of the economic success of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Angela. We can hear you. You're muted.
Can you hear me? So sorry.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I own the Highlander Hotel. I bought it, um, about 13 months ago. A little did I know would be the most challenging, um, harrowing year of my career, um, with the onset of the pandemic. Um, but I would tell you that, um, that the property really had two, uh, futures. It was either going to be torn down and go on the landfill, in the landfill, or a crazy entrepreneur like me, um, was going to pick it up. And I did. Uh, I have to tell you, the property was in such distress. Um, there was not, uh, a single dime put into it, uh, for 12 years, which is a really long time in a hotel. So on top of all of the deferred maintenance, I mean, the entire roof, everything else. So, um, I would really appreciate your support. Um, this hasn't been an easy year, um, but if you have, if you saw the Highlander, um, a year, two or three years ago and you come and see it now, um, I think it will, um, surprise and delight you. Um, we've come a long way. Um, I look forward to, um, using historic tax credits hopefully to complete all of the projects and all of that deferred maintenance. Um, these historic buildings aren't easy and it, a lot of people don't think about the sustainability um, factor and how green it is to preserve something rather than build new. So I would appreciate your support and also I encourage you to come, uh, see the Highlander. Um, she's really looking pretty special these days. Um, it's been, uh, uh, a crazy time. It's getting busier on the weekends, but it's like tumbleweeds, um, through the weekdays, um, in the pandemic, as is my hotel in Grinnell. Um, so we've got a long way to go and it's, uh, nothing is, um, certain. I've told the story several, several times that I've been 45 days away from, uh, running out of cash now four times. And somehow we've just pulled out, pulled it out and pulled it through. Um, but this is a storm unlike any other that I've been through. Um, but anyway, she's something special. Uh, when I put it under contract, everyone thought I was crazy, but I immediately felt that vibe that was here, um, since 1967, the year I was born. Um, and it still continues today. It is just a remarkable place. And I look forward to, uh, making it, and already I think I've made a lot of progress in making it a real source of Iowa City pride instead of the, the eyesore and embarrassment that it was. And also to, um, preserve that legacy that those entrepreneurs in 1967, uh, with one of the first supper clubs in Iowa. Um, I, I really am looking forward to, um, doing right by their legacy too, because that matters to me as well. So I'm happy to be here. We, my husband and I moved to Iowa City, so we've been here, um, now, uh, a little over a year. And I tell you, I'm really, really glad to be here. So I would appreciate your support.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, councilors, before I close the public hearing, I just wanted to see if you all, if you would be inclined to support, um, the commission's recommendation. Yes, all right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration?
I'm moved, Ms.
Move by Mem, seconded by Weiner. Council discussion.
I'll start if I might. Uh, if Kevin is still on here, Kevin, you brought back a lot of memories for me. Um, been out there many times, um, with the years my husband spent in the athletic department. We were out there for the Amanda V I P and many other events related to the athletic department and just going out there for dinners. And yes, the cinnamon rolls and everything else are, are all fond memories. So it is really, um, exciting to see this application. And as all of you know, and many members of the public, when it comes to historic preservation, I give great weight to the owner's, uh, thoughts and wishes. And so the fact that the owner is obviously very much supportive and wanting this for the, particularly for the economic development piece probably and tax credits in such a difficult time. Uh, I'm more than happy to support this, uh, not only for the economic development, but it, it is a treasure for those of us who've been around Iowa City for a long time. Um, has a lot of very special memories, so very happy to support this.
It, it was so wonderful to see so many of the photos that we don't often get that, but it was like a piece of a history all along and, and seeing it grow over the years. Uh, it, it, it was kind of like a walk down memory lane and, and I, like Susan and Kevin and all the others do have some many wonderful memories of that place over the years, those of us that have been, been around here for a while. do have some many wonderful memories of that place over the years, those of us that have been been around here for a while. So I I was just really pleased to see this. It really is indeed a piece of of the history of our community, and so I'm very much in favor of this rezoning.
Kevin, I, your wonderful storytelling around The Highlander was was great to hear, and it just struck me how, you know, we refer to this as historic preservation, and in a sense, what it is is memory preservation. These buildings are touchstones for so many memories. It's just extraordinary, and I really appreciated your presentation, and I wanted to thank Angela as well. This is really a story about resurrecting that building, that complex. I've been to the Hotel Grinnell when I knew you were involved with this project. I I felt very confident that the the result was going to be as as wonderful as it has become, so thank you for that. And unfortunately, with with COVID, I haven't had a chance to see the building, so I I want to start creating my own memories there, and I hope to be there soon.
It's striking somehow when things that were built within our our own lifetimes become end up taking on historic status, but that just that shows us that that it's every stage of the city's development that deserves to be preserved, and I will support this.
Well, thank you, Angela Harrington, for moving to Iowa City, a place that I absolutely love and really appreciate you taking on this project within our community and giving it a revitalization that is well worthy, and I am happy to support this tonight. All right, it looks like we are ready for a vote.
Maams?
Yes.
Salih?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10B, rezoning south of Kennedy Parkway and west of Camp Cardinal Boulevard. Ordinance conditionally resounding property located south of Kennedy Parkway and west of Camp Cardinal Boulevard from interim development Research Park Zone to rural residential, high-density single-family, low-density multifamily, and medium-density multifamily for approximately 27.19 acres of land. That's the second consideration, and the applicants have requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN O1, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Salih?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, maams.
Second.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. CNN O1, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Salih?
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept the correspondence? Move by Weiner, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10C is Cardinal Point West Part III Preliminary Preliminary Platte. Resolution approving a preliminary plat at Cardinal Point West Part III subdivision Iowa City, Iowa. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Both.
Second, maams.
And staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief presentation on this one. This does accompany that last application, which was the rezoning submitted at the same time as the request for preliminary plat. The boundaries of that area are shown on the screen outlined here in white. This is for 12 single-family lots, six duplex lots, and one multifamily lot with 32 proposed dwelling. And the plat also includes three outlets, two of which are for open space or well, for preservation of sensitive areas, and one which is for future development. This slide shows the outline of the proposed plat. It's an extension of previous two parts of Cardinal Point, one of the zonings that were just approved, which align with the outline of the plat shown here. Does include a street system, and as I said, several different types of housing. As we evaluate plats, we look at several items. We look at the comprehensive plan compliance, also any conditions that were placed with that zoning, and then the standards that govern design of subdivisions. This does support is supported by the comprehensive plan. The zone, the conditions that were just placed at the zoning stage have to do with things that will be enforced as as the development proceeds. So the triggers for them are at different stages, later stages in the development, having to do with the concept that was expressed for the out the design of the townhouse multifamily regulations about the outdoor space and some screening that's required. Looking ahead to the street and impact the street network would have and anticipating that some traffic calming will be necessary. The road network's a little bit is impacted by the terrain in this area. It has a little bit longer block length than we like to see ideally, so the traffic calming was in anticipation of that design. Infilling some sidewalks that are needed in addition to all of the required sidewalks that the new subdivision will provide, and then expressing a desire of the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at woodland management in addition to just simply preservation. As I mentioned, with traffic and transportation, a little bit, the block design here is impacted by the train. There's very steep train to the east in the slide to the right-hand side. It prohibits additional street connections, so some of those blocks are a little bit longer. Also, just to point out, on the west side of this plat, tide 218 isn't within 308. There's a portion of the site that would not be allowed to be developed for residential. It's a very small segment, and they've already identified that as not an area where they would would not put housing. As I mentioned, there are sensitive areas, steep wooded ravine on the right-hand side here, as well as on the left-hand side. So they've had to prepare an exhibit showing this, those, the boundaries of those sensitive areas and what amount of them would be preserved and protected, both because of this dangerousness of the steep slopes for construction, the desire to preserve woodlands. So there, some metal does include those things. The area to be subdivided has met the requirements of the code for the amount of preservation that is required. They've also previously installed stormwater management, so this phase of the development will make use of the existing stormwater facilities in the vicinity. Just to show again where this stage of the development is and the overall process, it's the preliminary plat and preliminary sensitive areas plan here. It'll be followed up at a separate agenda item when they go to development with the final plat, and then the required permitting that happens after that. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff recommended approval of the, and the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred at the January 7th meeting by a vote of seven to zero to also recommend this application. I'm happy to answer questions.
Here are no questions. Thank you, Danielle. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. And we ask everyone to keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Josh.
Hello, Mayor Tim, Mr. Mayor and Madam Pro Tim, and councilors at all, as well as thank you, Danielle, for that presentation. And thank you, counsel, for the expedited hearing on the rezoning process. I will keep it short and just express my gratitude for working with staff in a collaborative process to to get to this stage. It is a challenging piece of property. I think we do have a viable product that provides a variety of different housing opportunities for our community, and we're looking forward to the next stage in the process. So thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. CNN O1, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Hi, yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Fergus?
Yes.
Maams?
Yes.
Salih?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11, Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Decision. Decided the appeal to the city council of the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission Denying a Certificate of Appropriateness to replace the original siding at 1133 East Court Street in the Longfellow Historic District. I'm going to open the public hearing. And this is continued from our February 2nd meeting, and do we have staff that want to address this?
Mayor, I'm going to just start briefly by reminding you what the standard of review is here. Just to start, since there's been a lot of discussion, just to remind you what the decision was that you're considering on appeal, which was the denial of a certificate of appropriateness that was proposing removal of the aluminum siding in its entirety in either the installation of new aluminum siding or cement board siding over any existing historic siding, or the removal of any existing siding in its entirety, regardless of the condition and replacement in cement board in a configuration determined by the applicant. So that's the decision that's on appeal. You, at the end of your consideration, will want to make a motion to affirm, to deny, or to modify in whole or in part. Again, the standard of review is a very narrow one here. You must first determine whether the commission followed the guidelines that govern its decision-making. If you determine, if you believe they did not, you need to articulate and identify what guidelines they failed to follow. And then, secondly, you need to determine whether the commission's decision was arbitrary or capricious. Again, when the standard is arbitrary and capricious, if reasonable minds can differ, you do not have arbitrariness and capriciousness. You cannot reverse the commission's decision simply because you don't agree with it. So that's the standard for review, and I I believe staff has some additional information for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anne Russ with Neighborhood and Development Services. I'm just going to provide a brief overview of the memo that was included in your packet, and then I believe Kevin Boyd, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, also would like to address the council. So if you'll remember, on February 2nd, you requested that staff coordinate with the property owner to remove some of the aluminum siding in order to evaluate the condition of the original wood siding underneath. Since that meeting, we were able to develop a plan to identify targeted areas where the aluminum siding could be removed. The homeowner and the homeowner's contractor helped us to finalize that plan. We met with them on site to finalize that plan, and the contractor was able to remove some of the aluminum siding, and staff was able to assess the condition of the original wood siding underneath. Both planning staff and our housing rehab staff assessed the condition of the original wood siding, and we all agreed that it was in very good condition. Signs of moisture damage were not present. The paint was peeling, but it was not peeling due to moisture issues. Staff used a moisture meter to determine the moisture content in the wood, and it was around 6% to 7%, which is below a reading of 15%, which would indicate that the wood may not be able to be salvaged. It is very dry out right now during the winter. Staff could also take another reading in the spring. However, we don't anticipate a reading even in the spring to register at 15% or above. Based on the condition of the siding, staff would recommend that the original wood siding be retained, as was outlined in the Certificate of Appropriateness, which was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. Damaged siding could be removed and replaced, and since there's no original siding on the rear of the home, that could also be replaced. Replacement siding could consist of wood, smooth cement board, or smooth LP smart side siding. Staff believes that this recommendation is consistent with how other properties have been treated in the city's historic districts, and we'd like to continue to work with the property owner as needed to help move this project forward.
Counselors, any questions for Anne? I'm going to ask Kevin Boyd, who was the Chair of the Commission.
Yes, thank you. You know, as I, as I said last week, I, this decision that the commission made was was based on the guidelines. We didn't have some piece of critical information, so we denied the Certificate of Appropriateness. You all continued the hearing to get that information, kind of recognizing that that was an important piece in following those guidelines. You know, I also like to say that I really feel strongly the commission has not acted arbitrarily. You know, I know there was a few examples shared at the last meeting, but in each one of those cases, you know, we followed the guidelines. They they had different conditions, different scenarios, but all followed those guidelines. And if we decide something different tonight, this would be the arbitrary one in comparison. I also want to say that, you know, the commissioners I work with are prepared, thoughtful, and very balanced. We really try very hard to find solutions for property owners, and most are satisfied with the results. But sometimes the wishes of homeowners are in conflict with the guidelines, and we deny the application. And as you guys are experiencing last weekend tonight, those meetings are the toughest, and the commissioners don't take those meetings lightly. But if you do decide to overturn the work of the commission in whole or in part and act as the Preservation Commission tonight, I I wanted to share some advice that I give to new commissioners. Our job isn't all that different from kind of a homeowners association. We try to balance the desires of individual property owners with the guidelines that the entire neighborhood agreed to. So again, this is advice that I give new commissioners, you know, make the decisions based on the guidelines. It's the only way to treat everyone fairly. And when things aren't clear or uncertain, and we have to weigh in, we have to fall back to the principles of the guidelines. I know that carving out kind of mental exceptions because you wish the guidelines were different, or you feel that human desire just to say yes to someone, which is something we often feel. But that doesn't treat the homeowners fairly who found a way to achieve their goals within the guidelines and have expectations that others will be treated the same. So appreciate your consideration and thoughtfulness around this. Thank you very much.
Any questions from counselors?
Kevin, would would you or staff be able to comment on the letter that we received recently from from the property owner providing comment in a expert witness from an expert witness?
I, Counselor Thomas, I know that the 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 owners are going to present. Do you mind holding that question towards the end? Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? All right, we're going to ask that the homeowners come forward at this time. Are they present?
Hello?
Hello, there you are.
Hi. So we do have a short presentation, just a few slides here. Is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
They're going to give you access to square your, share your screen. And can you speak a little more, maybe direct into the mic, please?
Sure. Are you able to hear me better now?
A little bit.
Okay, I will try and speak up as much as I can here.
You're, that's perfect now.
Okay, great. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss this. All right, are you able to see the screen now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this. I'm going to skip the recap. I think Anne did a nice job of describing that and just jump to the findings that we had. So as Anne mentioned, we worked with our contractor and took the metal siding off and were able to see what was under that. The findings that we saw were that the wood siding is partially present and, as we thought, lacks a moisture barrier. We also found that there's holes in the wooden siding from insulation and from nails that have been observed. And there's insect damage and decay, and I'll show some pictures here in just a minute. There's also a lack of trim details on the windows and doors, and there is evidence of moisture damage. Just to recap staff's response here, the response from staff is that the siding is in very good condition and could reasonably be retained. That the moisture content is low at 6% to 7%. The wood siding can be scraped and sanded and then repainted, and that retaining the materials consistent with the previous decisions that have been made. And we believe all four of these points are false. And I want to go through and explain why. To start out with the good condition of the siding, the condition of the siding here is only part of the issue here. What we're looking to do is to restore the house in a way that makes it a permanent historical feature here. So we need something that is going to be retained, not just for a year or two, but for many years. And to do this, the problem of a lack of a moisture barrier in there is primarily the thing that is holding us up. We spoke with Michael Nolan, who is a certified architect here and has worked on many projects in the Iowa City area, and specifically on projects within the historical preservation areas, who echoed the same concerns that we have, that the issue here is much deeper than just the wood. There is a more lengthy letter that he wrote that I believe you all have access to, so I won't go into it. But suffice it to say, his response and his understanding of this is that were we to follow staff's guidelines here, we are creating at best a long-term maintenance issue for the house, and at worst, a mold and health hazard for the house. So the good condition that we see here is not indicative of something that would allow us to permanently maintain the house in the condition it's in, were we to just retain the wooden siding. The second point is the moisture content. The moisture content was measured on a day that was 6 degrees Fahrenheit, and it was measured using an instrument that staff admitted was unreliable in freezing conditions. This is well below freezing. We spent a lot of time looking at different moisture meters online. It could not find any of them that accurately measured temperatures below freezing. So the one piece of information, the one piece of data that is in here is admittedly unreliable and something that shouldn't even be included in this report. Beyond that, the moisture meters need to be calibrated to specific wood species. Moisture meters do not measure moisture, they actually measure conductivity. And if you don't calibrate to the wood species, you don't have accurate measurements, even when they are above freezing. Finally, there are obvious signs of moisture damage underlying the sheathing that we're ignoring. And just to give an example of what the sheathing looks like here, or rather, what the siding looks like, there's evidence of mold and holes and decay in here. There's also a lack of evidence of the crown molding that would be around the window trim. There is lead paint that is flaking off of the house. And there's issues of moisture damage that are in the sheathing that are underneath the siding. And this moisture damage in the corner of the house is precisely what we were afraid of and precisely what we predicted the last time we met and in the last presentation that we gave. So this is expected, and this is the result of a lack of a moisture barrier that is there and the result of what has happened over the years of lacking moisture barrier. This is something we want to remedy so that we can put a solution on here that is both historically accurate and maintains the house for the long term. The next thing that was brought up, Jessica mentioned that we could simply remove the lead paint and sand down the wood. This is a violation of the rules that are set up by the EPA. This is a violation of the Toxic Substances Control Act, and a statutory civil penalty for doing what Jessica recommended is a $25,000 fine. So this violation, which in the prohibited methods, the first method is what is recommended by Jessica, scraping and sanding of the wood, to bring this back, is something that would put us in danger of a large fine. A fine that was just issued last month to Home Depot at the tune of $20 million for hiring third-party companies to do residential lead removal and doing it incorrectly in ways like this. But the reason for this prohibition isn't just isn't just overregulation, it's because lead is one of the most toxic elements that laypeople can come in contact with. It affects the nervous system, particularly of young children. And as their brains develop, the presence of lead can affect the development of the brain. It can cause behavioral problems and slow growth. And this is something we have tried to discuss over and over with staff and with HBC. This is our daughter Esme. She is a thumbsucker, and her playground is the outside of our house, particularly in this time of COVID. And so we are very concerned about lead, and we don't want to have the problems associated with lead and the exposure fed to our children. Jessica has mentioned several times that we can use certified abatement, lead abatement firms to remove the lead safely and efficiently. We went online and looked, and there are no certified firms within 50 miles of Iowa City. So the only way to bring in a firm to do this would be to take someone in from out of state to do this. And again, lead abatement firms do not eliminate the risk of lead, they minimize the risk of lead. Finally, I want to address the issue of whether this is consistent with the previous decisions that have been made by the HBC. And I bring up the same examples I brought up last time. There was some discussion about when the decision was made and what information was known when the House at Seymour Avenue was allowed to remove the siding. And I just want to bring us back to the minutes of that meeting. In the minutes state that no one knows what is underneath the existing siding. Despite that, staff recommended that the homeowner be allowed to remove the historic siding. So again, this was done without knowledge of what was under there. And so this is inconsistent with what we are being required to do. Also, I want to bring up that the example of the house at 427 Clark Street again. Just to remind everyone, this is a house that had a similar feature to ours in that the walls were insulated. And when the homeowner tried to repair and remedy the wood siding, the problem that we have predicted and the problem that has been supported by the licensed architect that we've brought in as an expert witness here is the same thing. The wood siding failed. They had to remove the wood siding, had to put a vapor barrier on here, and they put cement board on it. There was some discussion that perhaps we were mistaken, and it was the house next door, this greenhouse here. This greenhouse also has the siding removed and has new siding added on to it. In this case, it's not cement board siding, it's LP siding, the other siding that Anne had mentioned. So again, there's examples of houses in nearly identical situations to ours where it's failing, and we have expert witnesses coming in and saying that this is going to fail. Lastly, I want to say that we're not looking for an exception. We're looking to follow the guidelines that are here. Iowa City's preservation guidelines state that substituting wood siding is allowed, and they specifically call out cement board siding as an approved substitute for this. The other guides that have been mentioned by staff in HBC is the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, which states standards are to be applied to specific rehabilitation projects in a reasonable manner, taking into consideration economic and technical feasibility. The technical feasibility, I think we've demonstrated here and have expert opinion, showing that it is not reasonable to try and maintain the siding in the condition of our house. When the house was built in 1924, it was a very different house than it is now. The house now is insulated, the balloon framing has fire breaks in it. All of these things change the characteristics and the way the wood siding functions. And it reduces the feasibility of this from a technical perspective. And when we think about this from an economic perspective, as the Secretary of Interior Standards require, if we look at the cost of this, this is a project that's going to put $50,000 or $60,000 on the table to do. And to do all of these things, we still would lack a proper moisture barrier that is required by modern building codes. And we still will require frequent re-scraping and repainting. And let's be clear, the re-scraping and repainting also needs to have the same lead mitigation. So the lead mitigation is not a one-time thing. It's something that has to happen over and over again. And each time this happens, this can expose our family to toxic metals. Lastly, I want to bring up again, probably the biggest example of latitude that has been given by HBC, and that is the house on Summit Street. This is a house where the front of the porch was dramatically changed, and not changed for historical reasons, not changed because there is degraded materials here, but changed because the homeowner wanted more light. This was changed because of the whim of the homeowner. We're not asking to change things because of our whims. We want to restore things to the historical state they are. But the $50,000 or $60,000 is a lot of money for us, and we want to do it in a way that is lasting and not in a way that causes continual problems, a continual exposure to lead. So in summary, staff has made assumptions about the feasibility and reliability of restoring the wood that are contradicted by licensed professionals, both the architects and our contractors. Staff has made a decision based on evidence that they admit may be faulty and unreliable, and that is the moisture meter that they use as the sole piece of data in this recommendation. Staff has recommended methods of lead removal that violate EPA regulations and lead to civil penalties where we follow them and are dangerous. There's a reason for these civil penalties. Staff has also refused to address the underlying issues of a lack of a moisture barrier under there and the evidence of moisture damage that is present on the sheathing. And finally, staff has refused to consider the cost, the health impact, feasibility, the energy efficiency, and modern building codes in making this decision. So again, we're not looking to change history. We're not looking to make this house into something that it's not. We're looking to use a material that is not only commonly used in historical houses, but is used in houses that have won historical awards in the Iowa City area. So we do believe that the decisions that are made here are not following the guidelines that are present, and we do believe that they are arbitrary and capricious in nature. And we ask that you overturn this and allow us to make our house look something like it did from a historical standpoint, but do it in a way that is long-lasting and safe. Thank you, and that's my presentation.
Thank you. All right, counselors, at this time, we can ask any questions of the owners, and we can also go into our discussion as counsel. I know that Counselor Thomas, if you wanted to go ahead with your question first.
Well, what I'd asked was for either a response from Kevin Boyd and/or staff to the letter we received and the presentation that we just saw regarding, you know, the the application and whether we should consider it an exception in this instance.
Counselor member Thomas, this is Anne Russett. We did receive the letter that Mr. Nolan put together yesterday. We have not had a chance to put together a formal response to that letter. If that's something that council wishes us to do, we would need some more time.
But what do you think about it, if you can talk to us a little bit?
Well, I think that I think that we have guidelines in place that recommend alternatives to what was included in that letter, and these are guidelines that the city has been using successfully for many years. I think if you want us to spend more time reviewing that letter and providing a formal response, that's something we can do.
And Kevin, what you respond to them? I think there is a section that where the owner said when they reviewing the minute for another houses, there is a sentence saying they don't know what it is underneath, and they still give them permission to change. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, I have not looked at the minutes. I remember that meeting and remember knowing that we were either fairly confident or confident in what the original material was. I don't, you know, obviously, if that, we needed to check those minutes more carefully when we approved them, but I don't, my recollection of that meeting is that we knew or had a very good understanding of what was likely underneath.
But even though if you understand, if you really understand what is underneath, and you did not mention it in the minute, and you say you don't know what underneath, that's like really big questions.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I can tell you, I am here to tell you what the committee or the commission, you know, how we got to our decision on this and kind of what we did decide and what we didn't. And I'm giving you my best recollection of what that meeting, what we knew at that meeting.
Thank you.
I have a procedural question for Eleanor. In terms of if the commission had made decisions in the past that maybe were not correct, but also were not appealed, should that influence our decision on the merits of this case?
I think you need to stick to the decision that was made in this case. Unless you want to do a full-blown examination of those previous circumstances. And you certainly don't have that before you now. But even if a wrong decision was made at a prior time or a correct decision was made at a prior time, that does not mean that the decision in front of you is one on which reasonable minds can't differ or that the guidelines weren't followed.
Yeah, let me just ask it a little bit differently. Do, is it, if, you know, because I think from the owner's perspective, it's the idea of fairness, that other people may have, you know, been treated differently than they were treated. Whether or not that occurred, in terms of our application, in terms of our standard of review for the commission's decision, those prior decisions aren't relevant, is that correct?
I don't think they're relevant.
Okay.
You would have to find, you would have to find a pattern of arbitrariness in previous decisions and inconsistency, substantial inconsistency. And you don't have that evidence before you because those decisions were not appealed and reviewed. So in terms of relevancy, I think they're not relevant.
Okay, thank you.
Eleanor, just help me understand. You mean right now, we just have to say yes with the decision that the Historic Preservation made? Or no? That what we have, or can we say, is there is an exception? Can we say anything else? Or yes, we have only either to agree with the commission or not to agree?
You can affirm the decision of the commission, agree with the decision of the commission. In other words, you can reverse the decision of the commission and grant the homeowners the certificate of appropriateness that they had requested. Or you can modify this decision in some way, but in all those circumstances, you have to put yourself in the shoes of the Historic Preservation Commission. You have to examine the guidelines, you have to determine whether those guidelines were followed or they were not. And you have to determine whether they made a decision on which reasonable minds can or cannot differ. If they made a decision on which reasonable minds can differ, it is not arbitrary and capricious.
Question for Anne or Kevin on the accuracy or inaccuracy of the moisture meter in the
Question for Anne or Kevin on the accuracy or inaccuracy of the moisture meter in the cold weather. How accurate is that? I, I'm not familiar with moisture meters and, and how, what temperature it needs to be. Is, was that an accurate explanation on their part?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. And that's why in our staff memo, we said that we would be willing to come out and do another moisture reading when it warms up in the spring to see if that percentage changes or not.
And how would that, our decision tonight then? If you're going, would we just keep extending this then until we get more information?
Well, I think, I think the decision before council is the denial. And the recommendation that staff presented in the memo aligns with the approval that the commission issued to the homeowners.
So just, just to clarify that, there was an approval of a different certificate of appropriateness that, that would only allow replacing the wood if it, if it was deteriorated to the point that it needed to be replaced. The certificate that was denied was the owner saying, regardless of the condition of the wood, we want to replace it with this other material. Is that right?
That's, that's correct. And if we go out in the spring and determine that there's much more moisture in it and that, you know, that the readings we had last week are no longer accurate, our recommendation would change. And they would be able to remove some of those pieces of siding.
Not being thoroughly familiar with all the rules and regulations, and I've found them long and complicated, I'll admit. This whole issue of the lack of a moisture barrier comes to my mind as particularly problematic. But I'm trying to understand, you know, what is the typical response to that with historic preservation? I mean, I grew up in a hundred-plus-year-old house and with a barn in Vermont that, yeah, the repainting was ridiculous. And we probably were scraping lead paint when I was a kid. Because of that and with, and also just the information that, you know, originally the house wasn't insulated, it's now been insulated, no moisture barrier. So I just try to understand the reasonableness and, and what's kind of been done with some of the others. So either Kevin or Anne, can you, you know, address that issue?
Yeah, I, I can maybe speak broadly. And then Anne, you may have to, you know, help with some more specifics. But, you know, I, I think we, these are not, what, what has come before us as the commission to remove siding and repair or replace the, the original historic siding is not an uncommon thing for us to deal with. I think what was uncommon about this was obviously we had, there was a, we didn't know the condition of the siding. And I think, you know, I can't speak to what the commission would have decided on this case if we had the, the visual inspection that happened last week or even the expert letter, right? We don't, I don't, we didn't have that opportunity to have that information. So it's hard for me to imagine what the eight or nine of us would have decided with that information. But I think that what was, what I can say is I think that, you know, there was not a lot of discussion about this, in part because it's so common. And we kind of, you know, I think the commissioners kind of knew the, knew the rules. And I, and I don't know, I don't know what the other homeowners, how they're managing to, to do this. But this isn't a common request for us to add a moisture meter, add a moisture barrier to do these things. You know, I think, you know, I live in a house that was, you know, won a historic preservation award for paint in 1996, and it needs a new coat now. But that's been a long time, you know? And, and so I think that I don't, I see these projects happening around my neighborhood and I don't, these aren't, the type of work they're asking about is fairly common. I don't know the specifics though of how other people are doing it. We see the applications, we generally approve them. But I can tell you that our, you know, at the commission, there was not a lot of discussion because it seemed pretty straightforward to us that they're asking to do something that others haven't asked. And we were, it's pretty common for us to, to go down, you know, to go down the route of repair or replacement depending on the condition. So I don't know if that helps Susan or not, or if I, if I muddied the water at all. I wasn't trying to. But I think Anne can maybe help answer if there's other things on how we, how we deal with this, with other, other applications or other requests.
If I can chime in for a second, Kevin, it's incorrect that we didn't ask the staff multiple times what we need to remove. Prior to the HPC meeting, we were told we, that not, he brings in pieces of siding will not give you enough information, that we would have to take it all off. That removing the piece of siding was only decided at the last meeting. So for two and a half years, we were told that it's all or nothing, which would mean that if we take the metal siding off, we would not be allowed to reply it. And we have proof, we have emails, we have correspondence with Jessica where it was said. So I don't understand why there's such a change right now. And, and what you're saying is simply incorrect. So we tried to work with HPC and we were not given the opportunity to do so.
I see what the commission discussed at that meeting. That's all. That's, that's it.
Yep. I do want to have our councilors give some more response. And then I'm going to ask everyone else, unless council asks a question directly to you, if you can just wait for council to ask. Council, any more comments?
I'd just like to say that it, that this is kind of a difficult situation. I, I believe from what I've seen in any of my council meetings in the last five years, I just, I feel like we're really caught in the middle on this. And, and personally, I, I don't have a lot of expertise in the matter of restoration of, of older homes. So that makes it even harder for me to, difficult to make, make a decision on this. But I'm appreciating the, the comments and would like to hear from the rest of the council what they, what their feelings are.
I agree with you, Pauline. This is really a difficult situation. I, I understand that the commissions follow the guideline that they have. To be honest with you, my problem was the guideline itself. You know, I think this guideline need to be changed. Even though maybe what I say is going to be like helpless because, you know, we already did that. But you know, this guideline, due to the weather change and climate action, all this, you know, the weather completely changed in Iowa. You know, we start seeing a loss in, when we had this guideline being implemented because we was laying certain, like certain weather. We know every year, when is the summer, when is the winter, how the winter is hot. But now we have this ratio hitting, we have this lot of kind of thing that will affect old houses. So, and we appreciate, you know, we appreciate that they already accept the, to, to designate their house to be historic. I always, when it come, as Susan mentioned, I've said it many times, when it come from the owner, I will be really supportive. But also we have to support the owners during like weather change. If we really want to continue reserve and continue doing historic reservation. Now, if somebody else over there would like to, to do their building or their houses to be designated as historic, they will think a hundred times if they hear all these different laws that we have. And if they cannot even make like some change that will cost them money, a lot of money right now. But if they do it the way it should be, maybe this is, will save them money for the future. I, nothing against the commission. You, you guys are following the rules and the guidelines. But to be honest, we need to change that guidelines. And also another thing, when I see that there is some houses has been giving a chance to use this material that allow in other houses. And even I guess the owner mentioned that those houses even get awarded. So why not? We can allow them to use the same thing. Yes, I want the commission to give the fact that the weather is changing. Everything that we have is all this guideline that we have. We had it for a long time and we never looked back to it to modify it. So it can work for everyone and every weather and every change that has been happening in Iowa. It is hard really, but I will love to hear the other council so we can come up with this decision. Thank you.
I, I have to agree with you, Mayor Protem, that I think, you know, the, the guidelines need to be looked at, especially when we're talking about climate action and some of those goals. I, I totally believe in historic preservation. And I also believe that we have to look at, you know, the, the guidelines and just see where we want to be as a community. I am, you know, I, I heard the owners and I really appreciate you taking time to do a presentation. It brought up a lot of things that I needed to, you know, look at and to kind of review. As a council, we need to look at this very narrow decision process. And that is, did the commission follow the guidelines? And I think I've heard several of our councilors say, yes, they did. And I can go into my rationales, why. I believe they follow the guidelines. And then the other is arbitrary or capricious. And, and, and so I, I personally, you know, have looked into this and I've said and I listened, and I am not supportive of reversing the decision. What I do know is, you know, you brought up some, you know, some concerns that I think that this council really should consider in the future. But what's before us today, I honestly believe that I'm not in the position to reverse it. But I really do appreciate the owners bringing this up before the council. And, you know, one of the things is, I, I believe even moving forward, that when you do go to remove your siding, you do have some options to, you know, replace some boards if, and that type of stuff. And, and I do understand that the economic impact, the challenges that it do present when you have to continuously paint a property. I, I do understand that. And, but at this point, I am not, and I don't believe that I have the ability to reverse this decision.
Well, I, I would have to agree that I think I, it's, it's, I agree with the mayor's comments that given, given the, the framework in which we're working, I would, I would have to agree that they follow the guidelines and are not acting arbitrarily in their decision-making. At the same time, I, I've heard from staff that there is certainly a willingness to reevaluate the information that they base their decision on, which may be weather-related. And should, should the findings change, that their response may change. So I, I don't know that, you know, what, what we're faced with now in terms of the outcome is, is certain. It may change as, as more information is provided. Should more information be sought. But for now, I would have to say I support the commission's finding.
I agree, and I, I think it really is a matter of what we have the authority to do. And in this case, the guidelines that we're talking about are the Department of Interior, right? The Secretary of Interior's guidelines relating to that requirement that the wood be preserved, if it can be preserved. And I just, you know, I want to apologize to the homeowners who, you know, clearly have felt that, you know, for a couple of years, they were getting different information than, than they have said that they've heard tonight. And if that's the case, that's really unfortunate. That's not how the process should work. Really appreciate you taking the time to put the presentation together and to organize your case for us so coherently. But with the standard of review that we have in front of us, I think we really do need to affirm.
I, I appreciate Councilor Burgess's comments because I think that does give a little bit different perspective on it and that, that we're bound by the decision we're supposed to make. And I also do appreciate the homeowners' input on this and do hope that perhaps in the spring, maybe it can be revisited and, and hopefully come to a good compromise.
I think these are all challenging situations when we have this narrow review. Because I think oftentimes we may disagree with, with the decision that was made, either from a common sense or not necessarily agreeing with the guidelines that they have to work with. But as Councilor Burgess and our city attorney have said, we have a very narrow review. So I will, I'll vote to affirm this. But I really, really hope that the property owners and staff in HPC will sit down and really look at some options. I've, and I don't have all, we've heard various things that I have not had the time to go back and verify. But when I hear somebody making an allegation that staff has recommended a paint removal method that is illegal, that concerns me. I hope there was misinterpretation somewhere. It concerns me when I hear people saying that they were told the only option was to take off all the siding. And then they wouldn't be able to put it back on. But now we find that we could take off parts and inspect parts. So to me, there's, there's either been mass miscommunication or we're not hearing all the accurate information. And that I find always very troubling. So I hope that everybody involved can have more discussion on this and find a way to move forward that is within the guidelines and is feasible for the property owners. I find the idea of doing major renovation on a house this age without a moisture barrier with all the other changes that have been made to the house to be probably very problematic for the house and the financial wherewithal of owners going forward. So I hope some, I hope some good communication and some solutions can come out of this.
I really want to say something, you know, I really don't feel good to say okay to this. And I'm going to feel guilty because I just feel a lot of thing was not like done as it should be, or maybe the fault is on the guideline itself. Nothing against the commission again, nothing against the staff. But can I just suggest something? And after that, I will decide how I can vote. You know, can we direct the commission to look at the guideline and modify it and think about all this weather changing and everything? And I think I talked to Jeff before about this. And he agreed that there is, you know, yeah, we have to, due to this, all this change, we might need to look at it. So I, I really encourage you to maybe to support these ideas to, you know, let the commission look again at the guideline with the staff and try to make a change accordingly. And maybe by the spring, if they made the change, this family can come and apply again for anything else. Or I don't know, but is there is any way we can direct the commission to do so?
Well, you can, you can all, all, always separate from the, the decision on the appeal, ask that the, the staff and the commission examine the, the guidelines on this issue. And so.
I, I personally would support the proposal by Mayor Protem. I think it's important. We still have to make a decision tonight.
Yeah.
I thought I recalled that the, that one, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry.
I mean, I thought I recall that once the, the condition, the true condition is discovered that whether that's now or in the spring, that they have the capacity to go back to the commission in an expedited, expedited fashion. Because I think Kevin and one other had, had been appointed as having, having the capacity to look at that and just move it forward rather than having to start an application all over again. Is that, am I right about that or am I wrong?
Well, that's what.
Well, that's what was done. If there's been some suggestion about waiting to do that again in the spring, I think if you wanted that to happen, you'd have to continue this, this hearing. Again. Because once, once there's the decision on the appeal, I mean, if there's, if you affirm the decision of the commission, the application doesn't exist anymore. It'd have to be a new application.
Eleanor, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Because we still have the approved certificate of appropriateness that would remain in effect. And if, and staff can continue to work with the property owners on that approval and reevaluate the condition of the wood in the spring, and if there's any changes, revise our recommendation and that would only have to be reviewed by staff and the chair and it would not have to go back to the full commission.
Yeah, I think that you can do that. But, but the conditions of that approved certificate of appropriateness stand that it's subject to the decision of the the chair and the, and the staff.
You muted, Mayor.
Yep, yep. Any other comments by counselors?
But now I guess you're saying that they, you say, you're saying that we need to continue to the spring or what you said exactly?
I was trying to understand what, I was trying to understand and what the, what, what's, what happens if we affirm the decision of the commission as not being arbitrary and capricious, since that's our narrow lane here? If I thought that, that, that when we first heard about this, or first heard the presentation two weeks ago, I thought we heard that if they go back, even, even under their current decision, if they go back, take off parts of the siding, of the metal siding, find out that it, that it has deteriorated, then they can, then once having that information, then they can proceed. I'm just trying to recall if that's, that was, that's my confusion.
Janice, what we, what the commission generally does when we deny an application is approve something else that, that we believe fits the guidelines. And that what we approved was very kind of broad because we didn't know the condition. So, you know, if you affirm the denial, which is what's being appealed, we still have that current certificate of appropriateness that allows for staff and chair to determine the condition, all of those things. Again, those are things we didn't have when we met. That we have a little bit of information now. We may have more information in the spring. I hope that helped the answer. I didn't mean to jump in. I just.
Okay, I still have my question. Can we ask the commission to revise their guideline? Or look at it, I mean?
Is, is there more support? For that? I'm supportive of it. And this is a question to our counselors.
Yes.
It, it won't apply to this application without a new application.
I know, I know that Eleanor, he might have a chance to come back again later as a commission.
I see Counselor Taylor, are you in? Okay, and I see Counselor Mims. So we're gonna, we're gonna task that to staff.
Can I, Mayor, can I just summarize an understanding really quick? I don't, I don't want to belabor, but you're asking us to review the standards to look to increase flexibility with siding improvement or siding replacement projects tied to maybe sometimes competing goals of energy efficiency and affordability? And just providing, generally providing some more flexibility in the guidelines? Is that kind of the narrow scope? Or are you looking at all guidelines? Are we getting into roofs and windows? Or can we keep it just to the siding framework for now?
I think we can certainly keep it to that. I do, I would be personally interested if there was any other concerns that staff or the commissioners would like to address.
Correct.
That can be, that can come out.
There's a, there's a long, I mean, you're gonna get into the whole guideline. You're talking about a very long-term sustained effort. If, if you're looking for more of a surgical approach to address this situation that you didn't feel you could, you know, reverse the decision of the commission on, then we would try to prioritize that and, and move that discussion with the commission forward fairly soon.
Okay.
I guess it would be amazing if the council doesn't have any objection to it.
Yep, I see a majority. Burgess just agreed as well. So, all right, we will, I'm assuming that was an agreement. All right. All right, so we're good there. So I think we're ready for a vote. And the vote would be to, well, actually, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And then, can I get a motion to affirm? To reverse, wait. The motion is to affirm.
Motion to affirm the decision of the commission denying the certificate of appropriateness. Yes.
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
Okay. And council discussion? Roll call, please.
Motion. Mayor.
Sorry, say that again.
You can do a voice vote. Would you like a roll call?
Oh, no. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passed to seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So, Burgess.
Move by Burgess, seconded by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 12 is Collector Wells. Numbers three and four rehabilitation. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Collector Well, numbers three and four rehabilitation project, establish an amount of bid, security to accompany each bid, Derek and city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff presentation.
Good evening, councilors. Have a presentation for you tonight. See if I can get this to work. And is that coming up for you? Great. So the Collector Well, three and four rehabilitation project is a drinking water project. The scope, schedule and costs, we're going to clean the Collector Well lateral screens to increase our production to meet or exceed the original design production. Remove and repair two of our well pumps and provide a new baseline of the well's capacity to monitor the wells in the future. Schedule would be to award to the winning bidder on March 16th, start work on April 8th, and complete on September 30th. The engineering estimate is 620,000. The consulting fee is 55,900. What is a collector well? It's simply a large shaft with a pump house on top of it with laterals along the bottom that are perforated to allow groundwater to infiltrate. That groundwater then fills up the shaft, which we then pump. The benefit of these collector wells is we use the natural river bed and bank as a filtration device, so we get a very high quality groundwater. Why Collector Wells three and four? We currently have five collector wells, the sand pit pumping station, and Collector Wells one through four. Three and four, as you can see, are our largest producers, so we're putting our money where we'll get our most benefit. On the side here is a photo of what one of our collector wells look like. If you've been down by the dog park or the water plant prairie park, you'll notice that they're just round houses. Where are they located? So Collector Wells three and four are down by the Thornberry Dog Park off of the Peninsula neighborhood. They look like this. So we've got a round house and then the laterals themselves radiate outwards from those caissons underneath the riverbed. The river water then pushes down through the riverbank and into those laterals, which then fill up the caisson for our water. Over time, those laterals become degraded and need to be cleaned. So the Collector Well three screens currently look like this. As you can see, there's quite a bit of calcified debris in there that we will remove through a jetting process. There's also some debris that's kind of just resting in the bottom. And you can see over time from 2007 to 2018, we've lost production in these wells and the low and high flow. Low and high flow is just, you know, if the river is high, we get more water infiltration. If the river is low, we get less infiltration. So seasonal variability does exist with these wells. So really Collector Well four has fouling. This white stuff here is actually archaeological fouling, so that would also be removed. At the end, the screens will look like they did originally with the stainless steel being visible, as you can see kind of on the top here. So that is the scope and the reason. Any questions?
Hearing no questions. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Make it a motion to approve.
So moved, Mims.
Second, Taylor.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Taylor. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes, motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 13, maximum property tax levy. Resolution approving the maximum property tax levy for certain levies for the proposed budget ending June 30th, 2022. And I'm gonna open, open the public hearing and we do need five votes to pass this. I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Dennis Bockenstedt. I'm the Finance Director for the City of Iowa City. I'm gonna share my screen here with you. I got a brief presentation. Hopefully you can all see that on your screen. So tonight is the public hearing for the FY22 maximum property tax levy. Approval of a maximum property tax levy was a new requirement that was passed by the state legislature in 2019. And they just chose certain levies to be impacted by this requirement. Those levies for the city would be its general levy, its transit and tort levies, the emergency levy and the employee benefit levies. The levies that were not impacted by this new legislation included the city's debt service levy, the library levy and the SMID levy. The, the proposed maximum property tax levy for those affected levies is just over $55 million. And as an increase of 2.12% over last year. And the primary reasons impacting this increase are that there's the, the average employee salary increase year over year is 2.8%. And also there's a minimum wage increase step up this year to $15 per hour. This increase of 2.12% does not reflect the decrease in the debt service levy. And since it is an increase of 2%, it does require the two-thirds majority of the council to approve it. For the FY22 budget overall, the property tax rate is decreasing by 10 cents from $15.77 to $15.67. The total property tax revenue's budget increases by 1.6%. And that is lower than the 2.12% because of the debt service levy decrease. A separate public hearing is still required in order to adopt the FY22 budget. And the approval of this maximum property tax levy is the next required step in order to adopt your FY22 budget. And I will answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Dennis? Thank you, Dennis. Hearing none. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Move by Thomas, seconded by Salee. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 14, abandoned vehicle towing process. Ordinance amending Title IX and title motor vehicles to provide that the process for towing and pounding and reclaiming of abandoned vehicles is consistent with the Iowa code. This is first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Burgess.
And staff presentation.
Mayor, this is just a cleanup of our local ordinance that provides for towing, impounding and reclaiming of abandoned vehicles to make it consistent with the state law. The main changes are to change the time to request a hearing from 21 days to 10 days. And also the ability to challenge the, the amount of the fees as well as the towing, the reason for the towing itself. It also, we also have provisions in our code that aren't governed by the state code that govern towing of vehicles that are not abandoned per se. And we've just made those provisions consistent for ease of administration.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Eleanor? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one. Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Next item is number 15, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 15A is Parks and Recreation Commission. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2022. And we'll have council discussion on this item. So we have.
Only one applicant at this point.
Yeah, one applicant, no gender requirement.
Slide with me.
Timothy Shea is sliding with me.
Me too.
All right. Could I get a motion to appoint Timothy Shea?
Move. Second, Taylor.
And all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 16, announcements of vacancies previous. And applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. Airport Zonin Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to file a five-year term. Board of Appeals License Electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Now we're at item number 17 and we're gonna um, have Ryan Longnecker from, with the UISG.
Good evening, council. Uh, just a few announcements tonight. First, I just want to let you all know that the University of Iowa Environmental Coalition um, is hosting a lecture panel called Combating Racism in Agriculture. And this will be this coming Thursday, February 18th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. So please feel free to uh, go online and find that out. Be a really interesting lecture to, to check out. Uh, next is um, that the University of Iowa also hosted two reimagining campus safety town halls where students, faculty and staff were allowed to come and give feedback on the three prototype models that have been uh, proposed. And I attended one of them and anecdotally, I would say the model that moves to a holistic approach that very much reduces the presence of traditional officers on campus and that moves to a much more a holistic approach of addressing certain issues with different people than traditional police officers was much more well-received than the other two. Um, and so those, uh, those feedback will go to the committee and hopefully this spring is the planned time that the uh, final recommendations will be presented to President Harold. Uh, so keep an eye out for updates on that. Next, the COVID-19 vaccine will be free of charge uh, through student health when it becomes available. So students will be able to get vaccinated. So hopefully that comes uh, soon. I myself hope that comes soon enough. And other than that, we are looking forward to starting on new initiatives and are excited to work with council and our senators on some exciting new pieces of legislation and so on. So that's all for me tonight. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Ryan. And we are at city council. Any updates on various meetings or upcoming meetings, community events? Items, items of interest?
Well, this is an item of interest to me at least anyway, and to others perhaps too. I'm, I'm happy to say. I never thought I'd hear myself say I was happy to be getting a vaccine, but I, I have been scheduled for my first COVID vaccination coming up very soon in the next few days. I'm excited about that. And I would encourage all the folks that are in the 1B category or those in the 1A that haven't done it yet to, to be patient and to pursue all avenues that are available to you, whatever comes open to try to get on the list and, and be vaccinated because I, I have hopes for that to, to help curb this and but also continue to, to mask up. Thank you, Mayor, for continuing that order and also social distance and just uh, be safe and, and be healthy.
Well, I have the same news as Pauline just reported. I'm through UIHC going to get my first shot tomorrow. So certainly encourage uh, you know, those who are interested in, in, in applying for a shot. The UAHC, I, I, you know, I just put my name in not that long ago and um, got the call yesterday. So uh, pleasant surprise. Hopefully this whole vaccination process will accelerate and, and we'll all be in the same place soon.
To get your pictures taken so that people, so that everyone can see that it's, that members of council are willing to do it. I, I don't have any news like that. I did want to really just thank all the whether there are people who are picking up garbage and recycling or doing the snowplows, everybody who's been out in this frigid weather doing the work of the city.
I really second that. It's very cold.
Yes.
I don't know how they do it, but they are doing amazing job for us to continue moving on the street and, yeah. Thank you.
All right, any other updates? I did just want to make mention that it is uh, Black History Month and there continues to be events happening. So looking at our city website as well as the Afro House, they have several events that they're hosting this week and throughout the rest of the month. So people, I encourage you to check them out. Also want to mention that the Guideline Center did open on Monday. They did a soft opening and I know that um, there could be a little confusion around that. Uh, not every avenue of, of the building is open. Right now, uh, they're doing the CSB, the, the crisis beds is what I understood, stand. But hopefully in the future, we'll get an update on them having all of the services available. But I think for starters, it happened on Monday. They're doing a soft opening so that they can really work through some of the nuances of this great facility.
And the winter shelter is open there and has been for a while.
Yes. Yes. All right. Moving on to city manager. Any updates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Our assistant city manager.
Not for me either. Thank you.
And our city attorney.
Nothing for me.
You just made a big announcement. So, yes, all right, our city clerk. Nothing from.
Yeah, nothing to report here.
All right. Could I, we're at item number 20, which is a, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh. Move, Thomas.
Second.
Yep, moved by Thomas, seconded by Salee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Have an awesome and amazing night and see you all.
Warm, everyone.
Good night, yep.
Be warm. The temperatures are gonna go up finally.
Thirty.
Good night.
Yeah, thank you.